Good evening, everybody. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM. It may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It's exciting me -- it's an exciting evening for North Reading. First thing on our agenda is, oh, actually, public comment. So, we're going to first start with that. Is anybody here for public comment? If somebody comes in later, we can go ahead and come back to it. But we're going to start the evening off with giving a little update on the sale of 104 Lowell Road. We put together a little presentation. I also asked some committee members and supporting staff and outside support consultants to join us this evening as we went through this presentation. It's been an amazing two years as we, believe it or not, it's been two years that we've been discussing this and trying to get this transaction completed over on 104 Lowell Road. You can go to the first slide. So, I thought I'd start off with just kind of giving a little, for the folks that are listening at home, just a little reminder of sort of the 104 Lowell Road and 102 Lowell Road and how it all came about. So, back in December of 2015, we entered into an agreement with the Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance with the state to take over the property, inquire the two parcels, using what they call the sale partnership model. And the sale partnership model had some incentives in there. So, initial, initially, what the agreement is that we sell the property, we split it 50/50. But with the incentives in there, we could have a range from 50% up to 70%. And in the winter of 2016, the town went through an RFP process and we brought on a real estate consultant firm, which is TRA Advisors. And Mr. Fran DeCoste, who's here with us this evening, has been with us from the beginning of the process and it's been a wonderful partnership with him and his firm. And without them, I don't know if we would be where we are today. So, we'll go through that as we continue through this presentation. In 2016, the Economic Development Committee, which members are here this evening, and I appreciate them showing up, we went through an RFP process or designed an RFP, which this board approved, and we got it on the street. And we went through that process and we got that out in September of 2016. And through TRA spareheading that effort, we had an industry night where the potential bidders could come in, ask questions, get some more information. And then, with the deadline was in November of 2016, where we were able to get the proposals in. And then, the EDC reviewed those proposals and we used a process that was managed by TRA. And we received five proposals and we evaluated them. And then, December 29th of 2016, the EDC made a selection to go with the Pulte, to accept the Pulte Homes $30 million cash offer for 450, 450 for-sale, age-restricted units. And the Board of Selectmen and the CPC jointly concurred with that proposal in January of 2017. And this is just a quick snapshot of what Pulte Homes is going to build and this is how it's going to lay out. So, you can see off here to the north, you've got Lowell Road. Michael, if you could just show Lowell Road, that's the existing road today. That's over here is further down, you see the little white line, that's the existing way in today. That's going to be an emergency entrance and exit. The main entrance is going to be right here where you come in for Edgewood today. Instead, you're going to be turning into the new project. And as you go around, it's going to circle around and right, the first building on your right as you enter is going to be their community center. And that's going to be the first building they're going to build is the one that's closest to Lowell Road, which is behind it. And then, the area in the, the green grassy area is going to be their leaching area for their wastewater facility, which is down here way in the back. And that's pretty much it in a summary. So, just to remind everybody, as we went through this and one of the reasons why we selected the Pulte Home option was we felt that it gave this town the best financial benefit. With the cash offer, it gave us the opportunity to have the biggest potential to fund some of our future growth opportunities and infrastructure needed. And the net proceeds, we, we knew would be somewhere between 16 million and 19 million. And we knew that the proceeds from this sale could only be used for capital investments and actually pay down on some debt if we elected to do that. This particular opportunity also gave, looked at, we looked at it from a tax perspective, will generate, once this is fully built out, as you just saw up in the board, which could be between the next four to five years, over $3 million in new revenues for the town. And it will have the middle, a very minimal impact, if any at all, on our school system since it's an age-restricted 55 and older. And I think the nice thing about it, too, is it gives us the opportunity to potentially use those funds, those proceeds, to invest in things, to help us make investments that could generate even more revenue in other areas to help stabilize our tax rate going forward. And the nice thing, too, is having about 1,000 new people living right here on Lowell Road with such close proximity to Route 28 to now we have more people shopping in our stores and in our restaurants and so on. So, there's a very big positive. So, the final transaction, and there was a lot of work over the last year getting to that date, but the final transaction actually took place on this Friday, December 1st. And under the sale partnership model, we had a 5% incentive to be able to sell this property within two years of the agreement with DCAM, as you saw in my first slide. So, we beat that deadline by one day and I want to thank Pulte Homes for working so hard with us to meet that deadline because that was another $1.5 million that was at risk if we didn't meet that deadline. So, the purchase price again was $30 million cash sale and that went through on December 1st. Under that sale partnership model, the net proceeds for the town came out to $20 million point 116. The state received $8.997 million. So, we both made out, I think, pretty well in this, this opportunity.
We already spent us.
We have lots of people that already spent us, too, but you know, 14 times over.
So, you know, the, the project is consistent with the board's strategic plan, trying to find housing opportunities for our seniors that want to stay in town and begin something that's a little more, less maintenance and affordable. It's, you know, considerably, but not, maybe not at the affordable range, but at least something considerable. But at least gives us another option, 450 units for them to consider. Next slide, please. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity this evening, it's why I asked a lot of people to come this evening, is because I think there has to be, on this board and myself personally, a lot of recognition and appreciation shown for what it took for us to get where we actually are today. And it starts with Senator Tarr accepting my request to come up and meet with him and Representative Jones, to meet with the right people and what we can do with that property because it just sat out there idle for so long and we knew the Gutierrez had given up on that property. So, it was a great opportunity for us to resurrect some thought and constructive conversation about what we could actually do with it. And having the benefit of the sale partnership model that was recently created under the DCAM, it just, the timing was perfect for us. And again, Representative Jones and Senator Tarr, I cannot thank you enough for your opportunity and I want to take this opportunity and give you guys a big hand. We did invite the folks from DCAM to join us this evening. Unfortunately, they couldn't make it, but I have a little letter that I'll come back to that at the end, if that's okay. Also, I want to, a big thank you to Secretary Jay Ash, who, he's the Secretary for the Housing and Economic Development and he came here to the board and spent some time with us. He drove around town, we showed him the parcels around town and he was the one that gave us a lot of advice and really told us to reconsider the opportunity for housing on that project rather than just look at it as a, a commercial-only property. And his advice turned out to be pretty well worth it. So, we want to thank him for the time that he's taken and the advice and the guidance he's given us all along the way over the last two years. And so, a big thank you to him and my board members. Without them, without their support through the process, supporting everything that Michael and his staff and Danielle and everything they were doing, so it was really a board effort, they're constantly asking questions, constantly challenging the process to make sure that the town was getting the best deal possible and, and making sure that it fit within the strategic plan for the town. So, I want to thank my board members for all you've done. Also, a big thank you to the town, the voters that came at town meeting. You know, getting folks to come up for a special town meeting isn't that easy and we had a great turnout, we had great support. We did have some people that didn't particularly like what we selected to do out there, but I think over time, hopefully, we can win them over when they see what great things we can do with those proceeds. So, I want to thank the voters of the town. I wanted, I asked the CPC members to be here because we jointly did this with them, but they also had a big role in it by helping us get the permits in place for Pulte. They were able to pull together the expedited permitting, get the team together with all the other town departments. So, I want to take a minute to thank you. Special thank you to Danielle McKnight, you really tireless effort, thank you very much. I only see a couple of my EDC members here, but, you know, the work they did was early in the process. They, they were really the ones that got down and did all the real difficult work getting those RFPs written right. We went over and we challenged each other and I think our success shows now in the reward. So, thank you to the EDC members. Our Conservation Commission and our Board of Health, behind the scenes, making sure that the right permitting was completed and make sure that DEP had everything they needed from us. So, I want to thank them and all the other departments, especially Michael Gilberto, your staff, Jane and Karen. I know behind the scenes, all the phone calls, all the paperwork, you know, it goes, it doesn't go unnoticed, so I want to thank you as well. Even though they're not here this evening, we should take an opportunity to thank the DEP, MIPA, DOT, all the other acronym letters that were out there because it's amazing what we were able to do in two-year period. When we tell people we were able to get DEP approval and MIPA within months of Pulte submitting, there was working groups. And Brad, thank you for influencing us a little bit behind the scenes, keeping people motivated to make a quick decision on this. It was a no-brainer in a lot of cases, though.
Those are our tough decisions.
With it, the property sat idle for so many years and undisturbed, you know, all the work that was done years in the past, we were able to leverage off of that and a lot of that was from the support of Representative Jones. And so, I want to thank the DEP and the MIPA especially for their quick reaction to this. I asked John, Jonathan Eichman to come in tonight because without him, we would not have gotten this deal done. Truly, day and night, taking away from his family time, constantly phone calls from Michael, myself, from everybody and John, honestly, on behalf of the board and everyone. And last but not least, our town administrator. Wow, this guy's a champion. So, thank you, Michael. Because of this deal, but it's going to pay dividends and we want to thank her for her sacrifice, for you being out of home and take this opportunity to make sure you take some time before your next child comes. Michael's due to have a baby here in April, so he, he needs to take some time and take care of his families, but he got this done, so you can go ahead and do that now. Thank you. So, if we could, take a picture opportunity, we have some, a toast up here. It's apple. It's, it's not liquor, it is apple cider. And I'd like everybody to come up, grab a glass, I'd like to stand up here if we could, get a toast of all of us, toasting towards the sale and, and show the community that this is a big success. So, please, if everybody could grab a glass. Yes.
Maybe before we gather everybody, I think, I'm probably speaking for the same thing that all the other board members are going to say as well, and so, I can defer to them, but it was your drive that got us here, your drive.
I can remember an email when I was working for the town of Tinsley Grove from you telling me about the sale partnership model when I was preparing to start here in August of 2014, what you guys were looking to do. And I think we met with Mary Beth Clancy in Brad's office and Bruce's office my first week here. And it was clear that we had a tremendous opportunity back then in August of 2014. And I don't think any of us really knew what that opportunity could lead us to and how many different goals it could help us to achieve, but here we are. And you, you drove it every day for, for three years.
I apologize.
No, no, it was all, all good. It was all good. When we needed guidance, on behalf of your other board members, you made yourself available for. I tried to count, but I lost count. It's dozens of conference calls, meetings, morning, noon, and night. And I just think it needs to be recognized how much time and effort you put into this.
A pleasure. Thank you.
Does Representative Jones have a word, too? Pass the microphone down to? Yeah, you, yeah.
I was trying to spare you.
Thanks, Steve. I would say Mike was pest. But you know what, this has been, this is a great success. This is the product of many hands, many meetings, many calls, many texts. Mike and Mike neither were shy or reticent about contacting the office. I'm glad we could play some small part in trying to move this forward either by facilitating a meeting, facilitating a phone call. I am pleased DEP moved a little faster than maybe historically they might on something like this. And I think that was because, you know, we've done a lot of work over the years and we, we kept some good records and we're able to point to some things. So, this is, this is a great success story for the town and, but as I was joking with Steve about obviously the state's already spent their portion, it creates a great opportunity and responsibility for the town because things like this don't come along in all communities ever and come along very few times in other communities and this is one of those rare opportunities. So, it's going to be up to the boards to make an informed and enlightened and hopefully long-lasting decision or decisions with this, with these proceeds that will, I'm sure we'll be getting, as it becomes more known, a number of questions about how did you come up with that deal and how did that get structured and so forth and so on. So, this is a great win for the town and hopefully it'll be the foundation for other successes down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just supposed to say, Mr. Chairman, the, you know, this actually began, maybe when you were on the board way back when, too, but.
I go, I go back to when we got the first piece of land, it's the Mullen Park.
Right, which is Mullen Park. So, like in 1991 or even before, 1990, we were, we asked for a seat at the table with the state as to with the disposition of the J.T. Berry Center. And I think they gave us a chair at the table, but not much say. But over the years.
Done pretty well over the years on the project.
Over the years, through the persistence of former board members, Representative Jones, Senator Beulah, Senator Tarr, previously, working with us, trying to get things facilitated. But the thing that really changed was over the last three, four, five years was the state's recognition that, you know, they had an awful lot of property out there that they weren't doing much with. And maybe it would be a good idea to partner with the communities, you know, which was the sale partnership model. And it really came to fruition under the Baker administration, you know, maybe started under Patrick, but under the Baker administration, really came to fruition. And this is a prime example as to what can be done and my guess is probably a model as to how things will be done going forward. So, it's, you know, a good testament to the persistence on the part of this board in particular because this is the one where it really happened, members here, but prior board members, too, in their persistence. And our representation at the state level has been unwavering as far as trying to get us assistance here and now threatening to, to get something which is going to bring a benefit to the community. And let me tell you, it's changed over the years with the CPC joining with us to change the zoning, you know, work with our professionals that we hired to, you know, what's the highest and best use. Jay Ash coming out here and, you know, giving us a dope slap and say, you know, why aren't you looking at it? You should be looking at this. This is what the market is, otherwise you're going to end up sitting in this thing for another 20 years or another generation. And again, to your persistence, Mr. Chairman, you know, you've helped shepherding this thing through and not giving up on it, it's paid off.
Yes, thank you.
Too bad we don't get a cut.
Hopefully we will.
But again, Representative Jones, you know, untiring effort. His facilitation of all of this was key. And we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to Walt.
Any other board members? We're good? I wanted, I do want to take the opportunity to go to the last slide. I'm glad I didn't forget. I would like to read the letter from DCAM if we could. It's a little small for me, so I'm going to try to hold it out here and read it the best I can. Dear Chairman Prisco and members of the board, congratulations on the closing of the former J.T. Berry property with Pulte Homes of New England. Unfortunately, we could not attend tonight's meeting, but we celebrate this win with all. This is a significant achievement for you, the town and the Commonwealth, as we calibrate, I'm sorry, collaborate on the first closing of sale partnership landmark, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read this here. First closing of a sale partnership land sale. In addition to the revenue generated by this sale, the Pulte Homes development plan will be great benefit to seniors in the town and region. We would like to especially acknowledge the partnership formed with the town administrator, Michael Gilberto, and the town planner Danielle McKnight, who worked so diligently in the town's behalf. We look forward to continuing benefits, continued benefits this project will offer at full build-out. Best regards, Carol Gladstone, Commissioner, DCAM.
Can't read the bottom. North Reading.
North Re, I cannot read the, North Reading has set the standard.
North Reading has set the standard of performance in the sale partnership model. Congrats.
Ah, thank you. I'm getting blind. Oh, yeah, I can, I can read it up there a lot better. Yeah, I, I'm getting there, unfortunately. But now, if we could, just take a moment, grab a glass, let's toast, let's get a great pitcher, something that we can put in the history, history books and maybe it'll go up to the, someday it'll be in the library. Oh, Liz, come on. If we could get everybody, I'm worried, how do you want us to stand? Some behind the table, some in front of the table? How do you want us to do?
Yes.
Tall people in the back, short people in the front.
Good.
Short people in the back.
And maybe we can put the slide to.
Fine China.
To the landscape. Do you want the block plant? Put the slide to the block plant.
Chris, you want, we got a sip, you can have it. Everyone, you're on one? Thank you.
I think everybody came behind the table. Brad, would you mind standing right, right in the middle of the front? I'll bring your.
Mo is good for parts.
Okay. See the screen? Can we use that as a base?
Board members. What does front mean?
They want us up front, Bob. Yeah? There's not many that could be in the back, actually. You need to be in the front. You need to be in the front. Because your height challenge.
Does everyone have?
So, why don't you, when you got these guys?
We got some good. Yeah, check there, get some money there.
You stay in the back, we'll send the chairs.
Yes.
Are we going behind the chairs? Is that going to work?
Are you going to be looking down?
Should we shut the projector off?
I didn't get you. I didn't get you.
No, leave, we can leave online.
You want that? It's going to be on Mike's face.
All the CBC people say to you.
Only three of us. Where are they?
CPC together.
Right here.
Just the three of us.
I don't know who everybody is.
Jane, where's Jane? We got to get her here. That might be the only one to see first.
Jane, Rich.
Okay.
Who are you?
Rich, you should put yourself in here.
Rich, come on over here with us.
You need to be in the picture, too? You're, what are you?
He's in license holder.
He's going to toast with us.
No, he's not involved with this.
No.
I'm keeping a watchful eye on stakeup.
Need to have a short step ladder in here, you know, that's always true.
She doesn't like it.
She's not looking happy.
Squeeze.
You're all happy, right?
Chris, I don't know what you're doing with that shot.
Shall I picture that?
All right. Okay, you can put your glasses up. Salute. Bad. I don't know, what are you saying, chairs?
Cheers.
They're cheap pictures, right?
Yeah, 20 million.
Steve and Danielle Switzer.
Switzer.
Okay, now, we put the guy from behind, Steve.
Oh, mistaken. Get him in there.
How many phone calls are we going to have?
I wasn't looking.
Are you going to have a drink?
I'll go up. Cheers.
Cheers.
Did I flash?
No.
Actually, I got a good one. The lens cover's on.
All right, drink up.
Cheers.
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 Oh, you lost your foot.
Cheers.
Cheers, Miss Danielle.
Fine China.
Fine China.
I texted him, but he never texted me. Yeah. So, I texted Joe, I called you.
You know, I sent some people along the way.
I just, I was trying to figure out.
By the way, we, they owe us $7,000 of $22,000.
I thought you would send it to everybody.
I just checked, I just checked.
I knew you were going to.
You just realized.
Not looking at the good part.
You guys gave us the money. I meant to put you on there. Want to see again? How you doing?
Very good.
Okay. Again, thank you, everyone. I, I did forget one organization to mention, and that was FinCom. As we were coming down to the final days, we didn't have enough money in our budget to finish out the cost, to do, finish the transaction. So, FinCom had allowed us to transition some money out of their budgets to help us get to the closing. So, I meant, I wanted, that's why I asked FinCom to come this evening and I am sorry I missed to put them on this list of thank yous, but FinCom, without your last minute jumping in there and funding our transaction, we wouldn't have been able to get it done without you either. So, thank you. So, CPC, I'll leave you with this as we break to get into the next part of the agenda is that now we have a lot of work to do. We have a great opportunity to have a lot of conversation amongst our two committees and boards to decide what we, what's the best use of that money. And I'm sure a lot of people around town have already spent it, as you've probably heard, but we will work together. I look forward to that continued conversation to collectively make the right decision that's in the best interest of the future of the town. So, we look forward to doing that with you. So, thank you, everybody. And if you, you're welcome to stay as we go through the lovely minutes and the.
Otherwise, you go home and watch the Celtics, the Bruins, or Dancing with the Stars.
And Monday Night Football.
And Monday Night Football.
Which is going to be a very good game.
But I think, you know, this is probably more exciting.
Yeah. But thank you. All right, representing, thank you. 8:30 tomorrow. 8:15. John, John's office. Okay. Next on the agenda, minutes, November 20th, 2017, regular and executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 20, 2017, regular session minutes as written.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 20, 2017, executive session mittens as written.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Next, the legal bills for October.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for October 2007 in the amount of $9,997.29 as follows. Coltman and Page, general, $8,776.29.
A motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Mister Chairman, I move to renew the following class one licenses to expire January one, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. That would be Brian Duschak, DBA National Sales, North Reading Motorsports, and Melconian Subaru.
You repeat those again?
Uh, Brian Duschak, DBA National Sales, North Reading Motorsports, and Melconian Subaru.
Thank you. I have a second? Okay. Second by Mister Minypelli and Mister O'Leary.
Mister Chairman, I will be recusing myself from any discussion and/or voting on this particular matter because a class one license also, by virtue of the class one, holds a class two license. I have a family member that holds, currently holds a class two license, so I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Mister O'Leary. Any other? Do we have any issues with this?
Sorry, please.
I just want to take a second. Okay, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none, and one abstention.
One abstention.
Let the ratings show, please. Next.
Uh, class two licenses, uh, Mister Chairman, before I read this motion, I do have a conflict of interest for Route twenty-eight motors, as I've represented them prior to being on the board as an attorney. So, with the, with the Chair's permission, I would like to, uh, move on the other two class two licenses first, then I will recuse myself for the other portion.
Perfect.
So, Mister Chairman, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January one, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. A and J Motors, Inc., and Brian Duschak, DBA National Sales.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, Mister Chairman?
And again, uh, this is a vote on a class two license, I have a family member that currently holds a class two license in the town of North Reading, so I will be abstaining, uh, on the vote, and I will not be participating in any discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mister O'Leary. I have a motion and a second. And any more discussion? None heard? So, this was A.J. Motors and Brian Duschak doing business of national sales. Correct. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, and-
I'll be abstaining.
And one abstention.
And Mister Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself for the Route twenty-eight portion of this motion.
You got it.
And again, I too, Mister Chairman, uh, will not be participating in any discussion regarding the, the motion which will be before us, and, um, will not, and I will be abstaining.
Thank you.
For the same stated reasons, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Minypelli, if you wouldn't mind reading the motion.
Mister Chairman, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January first, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. A.J. Motors, Inc., Brian Duschak, DBA National Sales, Nika, Inc., DBA Route twenty-eight Motors Exchange.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So, Route twenty-eight motors, is, is that the one that we've, uh, we've had some issue with in the past? Mister Gilberto?
It is, yes. I can report to the board that I have not received, uh, complaints with regard to the number of vehicles on there. My own casual observation, I haven't observed the overage that's there. I don't have, you know, a current point in time number at this moment, but as you can imagine, it does fluctuate. That request I believe we made to the operator back when this came up in October was when he was expecting a new delivery of vehicles, make sure he was, had room for them under his licensing requirements, so that's the best I can report at the moment, and we continue to keep an eye on the, the location.
Well, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this motion, so I do hope that the other two board members will, uh, be voting in favor of this license, uh, so you can continue. But I'm, I'm voting because I want to make sure there's a statement sent strongly that, uh, we're not going to accept this, to continue on. This has been happening for many years. You've been before this board many, this particular company's been before this board many times, and we've had, uh, show cause hearings prior to this, and, uh, you know, out of respect to your neighbors, out of respect to your license, um, I am, uh, we need to see a change, a permanent change, and we are not gonna go back and forth, you know, after we approve this license, if it gets approved this evening, I don't wanna come back there two weeks later and drive by and see forty cars, and cars parked in the woods and everywhere else. Um, you know, it's, it's been an ongoing issue, and I think a stance need to be made, so I'm gonna be voting in against the license, because I just feel it's been an ongoing problem, and it hasn't, I haven't seen any improvement. It only changes as we get closer to the licensing time. So, I'm not sure if my other fellow, fellow board members feel any different, but that's my stance. Yes.
Do you know the number of cars that you licensed to sell there?
Yes, I do.
How many?
It's supposed to be twenty-four outside and twenty-six unregistered vehicles per seat. I have assured that I will make sure of that number, and I've been on top of it. I've had some issues in the past few months, which I thought the last time we were here, at the location in North Reading, which the tenants over there went and took my place, offered more rents to the landlord, so I had to take some cars out. I had some family member, my father was ill for a long period, and I've been going back and forth out of state, so I wasn't around that much, unfortunately. He's, I ended it last week, and I'm gonna be here, so I have made a point with everyone there, I do not want it. Once we're closed, make sure the numbers are what it's supposed to be. So, I won't be seeing you about this again here.
I'm very sorry to hear about your father passing, and I appreciate that you're going to manage this and maintain the license, because I think it's probably abundantly clear at this point, from all the meetings and things, that, you know, you do, you do need to do the right thing and, and manage it, otherwise we'll be back, having you back in, having to revoke it, having, having here and to revoke it.
Mister Missery?
I will support the, uh, the license, however, I, I've been on the board for fourteen years, and this issue has come up a number of times, and I think that if it comes up again, the license is gonna go away. You've gotta put some effort into maintaining the regulations. So, you got one more chance for me.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, and-
I'll be abstaining.
And one abstention.
And Mister Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself for the Route twenty-eight portion of this motion.
You got it.
And again, I too, Mister Chairman, uh, will not be participating in any discussion regarding the, the motion which will be before us, and, um, will not, and I will be abstaining.
Thank you.
For the same stated reasons, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Minypelli, if you wouldn't mind reading the motion.
Mister Chairman, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January first, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. A.J. Motors, Inc., Brian Duschak, DBA National Sales.
I have a motion and a second.
Okay, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
And again, uh, this is a vote on a class two license, I have a family member that currently holds a class two license in the town of North Reading, so I will be abstaining, uh, on the vote, and I will not be participating in any discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mister O'Leary. I have a motion and a second. And any more discussion? None heard? So, this was A.J. Motors and Brian Duschak doing business of national sales. Correct. Okay. All those in favor?
Second.
Motion, I have a second, any discussion? Unheard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common victor, all alcohol license to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. That would be China cuisine, ginger gourmet restaurant, horseshoe cafe, Inc., and Kitty's Restaurant.
Second.
We have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store slash all alcohol licenses to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. That would be Eastgate Liquors.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following package store slash wine and malt beverage licenses to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements, convenience plus.
Second.
A second, motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following fraternal club licenses to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements, the North Reading Christopher Club.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Class one license, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class one licenses to expire January one, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. That would be Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales, North Reading Motorsports, and Melconian Subaru.
Can you repeat those again?
Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales, North Reading Motorsports, and Melconian Subaru.
Thank you, I have a second. Second by Mr. Minypelli and Mr. O'Larry.
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself from any discussion and or voting on this particular matter because a class one license also, by virtue of the class one, holds a class two license. I have a family member that currently holds a class two license, so I will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Mr. O'Larry. Any other, do we have any issues with this? Any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none, and one abstention.
Next. Class two licenses, Mr. Chairman, before I read this motion, I do have a conflict of interest for Route twenty-eight motors, as I've represented them prior to being on the board as an attorney. So with the chair's permission, I'd like to move on the other two, last two licenses first, then I will recuse myself for the other portion.
Perfect.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January one, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements, A and J Motors, Inc., and Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales.
I have a motion and a second.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
And again, this is a vote on a class two license. I have a family member that currently holds a class two license in town in North Reading, so I will be abstaining on the vote, and I will not be participating in any discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Larry. I have a motion and a second. And any more discussion? None heard? So this was A.J. Motors and Brian Duchak doing business as national sales.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, and?
I'll be abstaining.
And one abstention.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself for the Route twenty-eight portion of this motion.
You've got it.
And again, aye too, Mr. Chairman, will not be participating in any discussion regarding the motion which will be before us, and will not, and I will be abstaining.
Thank you.
For the same stated reasons, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Minypelli, if you wouldn't mind reading the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January first, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. A.J. Motors, Inc., Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales, Nika, Inc., DBA Route twenty-eight Motors Exchange.
Second.
A motion and a second. So, Route twenty-eight motors, is that the one that we've had some issue with in the past, Mr. Gilbert?
It is, yes. I can report to the board that I have not received complaints with regard to the number of vehicles on there. My own casual observation, I haven't observed the overage that's there. I don't have, you know, a current point in time number at this moment, but as you can imagine, it does fluctuate. That request I believe we made to the operator back when this came up in October was when he was expecting a new delivery of vehicles, make sure he was, had room for them under his licensing requirements, so that's the best I can report at the moment, and we continue to keep an eye on the location.
Well, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this motion, so I do hope that the other two board members will be voting in favor of this license, so you can continue, but I'm voting because I want to make sure this is a statement sent strongly that we're not going to accept this, to continue on. This has been happening for many years. You've been before this board many, this particular company's been before this board many times. And we've had show cause hearings prior to this, and, you know, out of respect to your neighbors, out of respect to your license, I am, we need to see a change, a permanent change, and we are not going to go back and forth, you know, after we approve this license. If it gets approved this evening, I don't want to come back there two weeks later and drive by and see forty cars, and cars parked in the woods and everywhere else. You know, it's been an ongoing issue, and I think a stance need to be made, so I'm going to be voting against the license, because I just feel it's been an ongoing problem, and it hasn't, I haven't seen any improvement. It only changes as we get closer to the licensing time. So I'm not sure if my other fellow board members feel any different, but that's my stance, yes.
Do you know the number of cars that you licensed to sell there?
Yes, I do.
How many?
It's supposed to be twenty-four outside and twenty-six unregistered vehicles per se. I have assured that I will make sure of the number, and I've been on top of it. I've had some issues in the past few months, which I thought the last time we were here, the location in North Reading, which the tenants over there once took my place, offered more rents to the landlord, so I had to take some cars out. I had some family member, my father was ill for a long period, and I've been going back and forth every day, so I wasn't around that much, unfortunately, he's like ended in last week, and I'm going to be here, so I have made a point with everyone there. I do not want it, once we're closed, make sure the numbers are what it's supposed to be. So I won't be seeing you about this again.
I'm very sorry to hear about your father passing, and I appreciate that you're going to manage this and maintain the license, because I think it's probably abundantly clear at this point, from all the meetings and things, that, you know, you do need to do the right thing and manage it, otherwise we'll be back, having you back in, having to revoke it, having to have a hearing to revoke it.
Mr. Messari.
I will support the license, however, I, I've been on the board for fourteen years, and this issue has come up a number of times, and I think that if it comes up again, the license is going to go away. You've got to put some effort into maintaining the regulations. So, you got one more chance for me.
Okay, so, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm voting no, and then we have two abstentions, Mr. O'Larry and Mr. Schultz. Okay, so the motion, the license passes, two to one.
Just as a point under rule of necessity, you may have to sign.
That's fine, I will sign.
That's true.
Yep, no, I will sign. I applaud you. Okay. Mr. Schultz, come right back in. Thank you, Mrs. Minypelli, for stepping in.
Morgan, seven, seven, you are to sign.
Jane, we're going to try not to cross pollinate with all of us, so if we do, just check us, we get a lot of people flying around.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class three licenses to expire
Please, you call yours.
January one, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Minypelli, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, any abstentions? None, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Kitty's Restaurant and Papaginos.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following delivery licenses to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements, that's Metro Town Car.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Larry, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, and we're up to appointments now?
Yep.
Just as a second, oh, never mind, I'll talk with the time, Mr. Chairman, we're good.
Okay.
We're up to appointments, reappointments, state ethics liaison, Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Barbara Stabs as the state ethics commission liaison for a term to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Second, I got a motion and a second, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Marion McKay as town treasurer for a term to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
She was feeling pretty good, she left.
She did share the votes.
She did share the votes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following names for reappointment as members of the conservation commission for terms to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. There's one opening, Martin Weiss incumbent and Timothy Allen incumbent.
I have a motion and a second.
There's actually two opens, yeah, second.
I have a second, Mr. O'Larry, any discussion?
Actually, they're both incumbents, and they're both up for reappointment, actually, there's actually two openings. So I would recommend, again, both of these individuals are long-serving members of the conservation commission who have stepped up to the plate, done the job, and I would recommend reappointment for both gentlemen. So Jane, Frank, that's two.
Two openings.
Okay, two openings, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Larry, any other discussion? Thank Mr. Weiss and Mr. Allen for continuing their, their support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous. Mr. Chairman, do a roll call vote?
Yes, we do.
On the Hillview?
On all appointments, but we haven't.
Yeah, I guess we do.
We haven't been, we didn't do any tonight.
I believe when we have more candidates than openings, we've done a roll call, the board's practice has been to do a roll call vote, but when there hasn't been
Right.
A contested appointment, I don't believe there's been.
The motion says one opening, is it two openings?
It's two openings. It's two openings, yes.
Jane corrected it.
Sorry, to clarify that.
So then, I get that we're fine, because we're?
But for the next one, you will need to.
Mr. Allen and Mr. Allen.
We're okay on that, Mr. O'Larry?
Yeah, on what, conservation?
Yeah. We have the roll call vote?
Totally, yep, we're good.
For Hillview, you will.
Hillview, we will.
That I certainly did, yeah.
We have five for three on Hillview?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following names for appointment, a reappointment appointment to Hillview Commission for a term to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. There's three openings, Charles Carucci incumbent, Francis Hatchey incumbent, William King incumbent, Peter Antonucci, and Robert B. Gilchrist.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, Mr. O'Larry?
Mr. Chairman, again, I would like to recommend to the board, highly recommend that the three incumbents get reappointed, all three of these gentlemen, Mr. Carucci, Mr. Hatchey, and Mr. King, have been working very hard, and as everybody is aware on the board, we've been in a transition period, in a challenging period at the Hillview, and these gentlemen have put in the requisite amount of time, requisite amount of time and effort to maintain the stewardship of the Hillview Commission, and again, they're certainly deserving of reappointment. Again, the other two gentlemen, good candidates, we'd like to, again, keep their resumes on record, so that should there become a vacancy, they would be considered a later date. So I'd recommend Mr. Carucci, Mr. Hatchey, and Mr. King. Again, in consultation, by the way, in consultation with the chairman, Mr. Stack, same recommendation.
Any other board member have a discussion? I just want to say that, you know, I want to thank them for their time, I think your decision bringing in Mr. Yebes Group, Atis Tavern, for example, is, I like going to the establishment, I've enjoyed it very much, I think it's been a great addition to the Hillview. I hope more people in the community come out and use it, because I think it's one of the best places around, so you guys did a great, great selection there. All right, roll call, yes.
Quick, I just want to point out, I thank anyone for applying and volunteering to do this, even though we only pick three, there's five great people that applied, and I think they all should be.
Absolutely, and again, we'll keep their applications on file, and keep in contact with them, and again, if something else opens up, where we think their skill sets are, would be useful, we'll certainly contact and reach out to them.
Yes, there's plenty of other committees too, that could use the support if they're still interested in something else other than Hillview. We certainly can use their assistance. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry, that's right, Mr. O'Larry.
Mr. Carucci, Mr. Hatchey, and Mr. King.
Mr. Messari.
Mr. Carucci, Mr. Hatchey, and Mr. King.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Carucci, Mr. Hatchey, and Mr. King.
Mrs. Minypelli?
Mr. Carucci, Mr. Hatchey, and Mr. King.
And the chair votes Mr. Carucci, Hatchey, and King. That's unanimous. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following names for reappointment as members of the water commission for terms to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. There are two openings, Vincent Ragucci and Andrew B. Street, and they're both incumbents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ragucci and Mr. Street are both incumbents. Mr. Ragucci in particular has been a long-serving member, sometime all by himself. Mr. Street was willing to step up to the plate and volunteer, and again, they're worthy of consideration and reappointment, and again, I appreciate their efforts, and they're going to have a little bit more work to do in forthcoming months as we come to a final decision in fruition as to our efforts and make the final determinations as to how we're going to have potable water for our community, so I appreciate their efforts and their willingness to serve.
Any other member comment? No, the time is critical for their involvement, so we would thank them for re-upping their time on the water commission. So if there's no other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following names for reappointment as members of the historic district commission for terms to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. There are three openings, there are four candidates, the first candidate is Mark Hall incumbent, second is David Hamm incumbent, third is Paul Chapman incumbent, and fourth is Peter Antonucci.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I will be recommending that the board recommend the incumbents continue to do a good job on historic commission.
So this will be a roll call vote? Okay, any discussion, any more discussion? We'll stop with Mr. O'Larry.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, and Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Messari.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, and Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, Mr. Chapman.
Chair votes Mr. Hall, Mr. Hamm, and Mr. Chapman. Unanimous. Thank you. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following name for reappointment as member of the historical commission for a term to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. There are two openings, Ms. Patricia Romeo is incumbent, and Francine Cofflin.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And who's the liaison?
As, sorry. My recommendation as liaison to the historic commission will be for the incumbent and Francine Cofflin, who was a member, would be a member.
A member, great. So this would be a roll call vote?
Oh, one more thing, Michael, I think we should recommend the, and acknowledge the long-term seat that Happy DeFraser played on the historic commission through all these years, and I wish to thank her for all her efforts.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, don't need a roll call, we don't need a roll call.
Two for two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint KP Law as town council for North Reading for a term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
I got a second, any discussion?
They do a great job for us.
They want to back.
And I think dollars and cents wise, well worth it.
Well, I, well, we'll have to say, going through this transaction for one oh four lower, we really truly saw the value of K and P when we went through that process, so I will say, I'm certainly sold on their services. Mr. Gilardo, you want to, you have anything you want to say?
Just, I'll add, just that, per the board's request, the next agenda item is to approve an agreement, so if the appointment goes through, they've given us an agreement, a fee agreement, as was requested, the motion would authorize the chairman to sign the agreement, I'm sorry, the clerk to sign the agreement, excuse me, thank you.
Good. Mrs. Minypelli?
Have we ever signed one of those with them before?
Not to my knowledge.
Years ago, when Len Copeland, I think, first came in, I think we did, but that was a long, long time ago.
I would say just keep it as it is. I think that was their way of informing us that they're increasing their rate by five dollars an hour, and then at the beginning of the year, it's going to go up another five dollars, right?
Well, they gave us a notice by communication that that was happening, but my understanding from the board's discussion was that the board wanted to see a fee agreement. I don't think that they will require us to sign one.
No, we're supporting it. We should sign it.
Or not.
Okay, I got a motion, I have a second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous.
Okay, in that regard, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agreement with KP Law for town council services and authorize the clerk of the board to sign the agreement.
Second.
I got a motion, I have a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous. Who was the second on that one?
Me.
Mr. O'Larry. Keep up, Mr. Schultz, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ban the chair. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to reconfirm the vote of September eighteen, two thousand and seventeen, designated the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to MGL Chapter two sixty-eight A. Parks and Recreation, the infant toddler instructor, after-school instructor-coach, summer program instructor-coach, summer program director, summer program assistant director, summer counselor, for the police, matron, and crossing guard, counsel on the agent, van driver, and to add the following position as having special municipal employee status pursuant to MGL Chapter two sixty-eight A, finance committee recording secretary.
Second.
I have a second discussion, Mr. Gilardo.
Mr. Chairman, through you, so as some, as the board members may recall, back in September, we reviewed with the board this prospect of going through the special municipal employee status designation, and really, it's something that we've identified for positions that are part-time in nature, that we traditionally have had a difficult time of recruiting candidates for the work, because they are part-time in nature, and we often have found that after, in some cases, extensive advertising efforts, it's employees of the town in another capacity, whether it be in town hall, or in a public safety department, or for that matter, in the school department, who may have the capacity and the willingness to participate. And in that vein, a recommendation, and you have a comment in there prepared by the human resources director, which reflects the comments provided by the various departments who were initially approved, indicating that so far, they've found that the system seems to be, to be working. In addition to that, we have a position that we're recommending be added, and this is a part-time finance committee recording secretary position. The hours are generally constituted by budget meetings in the evenings during the budget season, with occasional meetings outside of that, and again, having advertised that position on and off for nearly the entire year, if I remember correctly, we identified two candidates, and one of the candidates was heavily qualified for the job, but ultimately opted to withdraw his name for consideration. We have another candidate who is a part-time employee in another department, and this work would not conflict with that.
Any questions for our head charter director, town administrator? Mr. O'Larry?
Again, it's just important to note that a special employee designation, Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong on, articulate a little further, but it goes with the position, not necessarily with the individual.
That's correct.
So we are designating these positions townwide as special employees, and it has a little different connotation or effect, and again, it doesn't go with the individual, because with the, with the title.
With the position, that's correct.
So, generally, we used to be pretty stingy with these, but
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Larry?
We used to be pretty stingy with the designations.
Why, why was that?
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, generally conflict of interest.
Exactly.
Right.
It's against the law, so taking a vote like that is beyond an ordinary vote, it's an extraordinary vote to allow something that the law doesn't otherwise allow, unless we vote to allow it.
And the main reason for this is because we haven't been able to reach the right?
We've been unable to attract candidates in some positions, we've been unable to maintain candidates for the positions. The finance committee recording secretary is one that has probably the most flexibility, as I look at it, in that the work is in the evenings, and yet, we still have struggled to identify candidates for the position historically. And it really wasn't until a couple of years ago that we were able to fill it with a part-time person here, and maintain it. That person was preceded by another part-time person who was working, and this, there's been a bit of a practice that we're trying to make sure we comply with the law under.
No, I, I, I understand that one makes total sense, and that would come with some sort of a stipend or something to pay for that.
In our legal right, yes.
I think that the other issue being, just because it's designated as a special municipal employee, whoever it is, if it's an individual that's already employed here and then accepts employment, because that was my understanding, was they were seeking people from the school department to fulfill these summer positions. That was what I recollect was going on.
So, it's correct that we received a candidate from the school department, but I don't think that we were seeking them from there. I think that's where we, after advertising more broadly, that that's where we end up, ended up finding a candidate for the position.
And for the summer programs, that's where most of the applicants were coming from.
That's correct, yes.
So they would still have to meet the requirements or comply with the requirements of the regulations, not do one job while they're on the other, not do that job while they're supposed to be doing.
I'll defer to the human resource director, my understanding is yes.
Through the chair, if we would not hire them, we would not hire them normally. This is not, we're not setting aside jobs for people otherwise situated, we're expanding the pool to include them. But once they're included within that pool, they are under the same restrictions in terms of, if we wouldn't have hired them before, we're not hiring them now. It just broadens the pool. For example, with the van driver position, we have two van drivers, both are part-time, one has the, you know, the position- One has the, you know, the position has the designation. One utilizes it, one does not. If you don't re-up this for the coming year, because that was the condition in September that would revisit in December, we'll terminate the employment of one of them. Similarly, when it comes time for, you know, the natural sort of time shift is a lot of times with school department employees. But that doesn't mean that a qualified person not working for the school department would be shut out, not whatsoever.
So I had a question. These positions, is it against the rules or the law to post these positions on a social media site?
We post them on the, one of the conditions is we post them on, no, the short answer is no. But we post all positions on the town website under the HR department. And that was one of the things, actually, as we started to move into this. At one point, when I first got here, the HR department had certain jobs posted, and some of the other departments had things posted. Parks and Rec had their own posting for jobs. And they're welcome to do it in addition to, but the first place that people typically are looking for jobs is the HR department, part of the website. So all jobs are posted there.
If these part-time jobs were there, somewhat limited hours and not a tremendous commitment, Mr. Schultz, would this be something you could actually post on the North Reading Community Connection?
Yeah, one is open. I think it's a good idea.
Certainly.
I think we should, you know, maybe we can...
We're actually in the process of having a board or a town hall Facebook page to be able to reach out to the community, but not together now with Mr. Gilberto's.
That Community Connection has thousands of people.
Lot of reach.
Lot of reach, and the people are looking for part-time jobs to supplement when their kids are in school especially, that are looking for those types of jobs. So just an idea that I wanted to pass along.
And I'm sure it would help us with the full-time positions as well.
Yeah.
Every, every chance we can get to get a qualified candidate, all the better.
I guess that was my issue too, but I think the director spoke about that, because I know an awful lot of people, for parents, for example, who are in the position to be able to do something part-time like that, that they just weren't able to find the job listings or the job postings. So I think that trying to have a greater outreach is really the key there, because there's a lot of people in the community that want to do something.
My initial concern was centralizing it to make sure that it was consistent, and that everybody knew you go there and it's there.
Yes.
Beyond that, in terms of, in fact, one of the, one of the things we did was have the departments be a little bit more responsible for advertising their positions beyond that. That way, they'd be a little bit, have more skin in the game, be a little bit more accountable for that. But yes, anything, social media, that can certainly increase our reach and increase our pool and the depth of the pool, most welcome.
Parks and Rec too, they do have a great social media presence.
Thank you. So I have a motion. Second, we've had discussion. So any more discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for spending the evening with us. Is, we have one more thing, or is that it?
We're on to TV's report.
And the only item I was going to report on was the bond rating assignment, which I did earlier, so I had no further comment.
I think this would be a good chance to take a few minutes to talk about the ring and ride program real quick.
Sure.
If you wouldn't mind, Doc.
Sure.
I mean, I have the update here, but...
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to speak to it. So just a reminder for the community, we do have a transportation option here in North Reading, the ring and ride program. It's available through the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, and it is available to provide transportation to medical appointments for senior citizens and for disabled veterans of any age. We've had some usage over the past, the first basically month of the program. It's twenty-five rides, I believe, we provided amongst nine riders. We'd love to try to boost that number up to get some more usage and encourage people to look at that as an option for medical transportation for them. It's low-cost medical transportation, and we are paying for it to be available. We'll continue to push out the information to make it available to folks, but it's a great option for somebody who needs transportation from here in North Reading. And we welcome feedback. Certainly feel free to contact my office if there's something, a need that somebody sees in the program that they'd like to see fulfilled otherwise, so we're all ears, for sure.
I have received some feedback, especially residents wanting to get some transportation for their parent to maybe go visit someone. And unfortunately, we're not at the stage yet where the ride is set up for that. It is truly focused on medical appointments only at this time. But as the town administrator mentioned, we've only had twenty-five rides focused around nine customers. There's been twenty-four cancellations already, and there have been two no-shows. So I'm okay with the cancellations, and medical appointments change, and I understand. But I want us, if we could all try our best to try to continue to get the outreach and get people aware, because I constantly run into people and they have no idea it's still out there. So whatever we have to do to get the fullest reach on this, any suggestions any of the board members have, certainly your social media reach would be helpful as well. But twenty-five riders since October twenty, twenty-five rides since October thirty-first, and that's as of effective, like, December first. So almost one a day, but we're getting there. But thank you.
And nothing else, Mr. Gilberto?
No, sir.
Mr. Schultz, why don't you start us off this evening?
I just want to wish everybody, we're entering the holiday season, wish everybody out there a great holiday season. And very, again, Mr. Chair, you are to be commended for the late work you did on the Polte Homes land deal as a monumental project. It's great for our town. I think our next task is to figure out how to spend that money. We're going to get returns year over year on that money, not just spending on a one-off project. So I think we're in a great situation. And again, all you folks that were here before me, you guys did a heck of a job on this, and I commend everybody here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Minipelli.
Sure, I'd, I'd want to say the same thing and just thank you, thank Mr. Gilberto, tenacious, for your tenacity, for your leadership, for steering this ship till we get to this point. And thank the board members. I'm proud to be a part of that with the board. And also, twenty-five rides since that timeframe is good.
It's good. No, it's good.
It's twenty-five rides that those people might not have been able to get. So it's gonna, it'll get there, and it'll, 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 the word of mouth will spread, and people will start using it more. So that's another excellent service that is something good to, good to be involved in.
It's thirty-two days, so it's only been operational thirty-two days. If it's twenty-five rides in thirty-two days, I'm encouraged.
That, that, those people could look to that service versus...
It's the no-shows I get a little concerned about, so we want to make sure we limit those, because we pay for them when they don't show.
That's it.
Mr. Messier.
I'd like to thank you, and of course, everybody else that contributed to getting this Polte deal passed and signed. It's a tremendous effort, took lots and lots of time.
Great team effort.
As I'm well aware, getting involved with various things, and, you know, it's a, it's a great end to the year, but we have two other tasks to get done this year, Michael, as you know.
And that's on that side of this campaign.
Be the fire contract and the DPW contract, so we're not, we're not quite done yet.
You guys are working that water. I know you're working it day and night, so, and that's as big as, if not bigger.
And we have the water, that's correct, and we have some challenges as the, as time evolves.
And I know it's taken a tremendous amount of time. I mean, you, Mr. O'Larry.
I don't think, I don't see us not, at this point, being able to make some kind of a decision. And would you stand behind that? I know I have some concerns.
There may be some concerns, but I think we're going to keep everybody's feet to the fire so that we can keep to the timetable that we established. And if there's a need to push it out, you'll be the first to know.
I did have a question for you, though. Was, is Andover, have they scheduled their special town meeting, or is...
Yes, it was the twenty-ninth of January.
January twenty-ninth, as I understand it, yes.
January twenty-ninth, and they've got this article, they've got an article for rezoning up on Daskum Road, and they also have, I think, two other issues relating to medical marijuana or something also on there. And this is a special town meeting.
The mixed-use project on Daskum Road?
Yes, excuse, so...
Mr. O'Larry, do you think we should participate and show up for that meeting as a board, or you, whatever you need us to do?
Yes, as it gets closer, and I'm sure we're going to have, I'm confident we're going to have some more meetings with the Andover representatives in short order. So I mean, my expectation is, you know, I think we should have some representation there, and I certainly have been planning on attending, so.
I would say the same thing.
So I'll put it, I suggest to board members, put that date in your calendar if you can, and whatever we can do to show you our support, we should do it. Anything else, Mr. Messier?
Well, we did, we did have a meeting in Boston, and, Michael, you want to...
Yeah, just a meeting in Boston with the MWRA. I think, you know, they're, they're taking a wait-and-see attitude, depending upon what posture we take with Andover. We have informed them that, again, we are considering the Andover proposal. We're doing our due diligence as we think that it was necessary based upon the proposal that was made to us. But we also inform them that, you know, that it's not a done deal. And there's still a lot of hurdles to go over with Andovers, but also hurdles associated with their proposal too. But we thank them very much for their cooperation with us up to this point. We assure them that we were not asking them, them to bid against themselves, and this isn't a, a direct competition in relation to, you know, this is what they're offering, this is what you're offering us. It's just, you know, at one point in time, they were the only, only show in town, and Andover, at a very late hour, you know, came forth with a proposal that we found necessary to, to consider. They understand that. They're a little bit perplexed by it, certainly, but disappointed that we're considering, but that, but they also understand that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the people of North Reading, and it's a big decision that we have to make. They appreciate that, and they, we've been keeping them very well informed and in the loop as to, you know, where we're at with negotiations with Andover. We haven't held anything back with the MWRA, and I want to reiterate, they've been nothing but helpful, considerate, and, and I think very generous in relation to the proposal that they offered us. And we reiterated that to them the other day, so they're just going to take a wait-and-see posture till we let them know, you know, come April. In the meantime, they've offered to consider also working with us to get necessary data for us to make an appropriate decision, and that includes the wastewater proposal. You know, there appears to be a linkage between the water and wastewater, which is not surprising, as there is with Andover. So, but we need to collect some additional data so that we can make an informed decision. They've committed to continue to work with us to give us the data necessary so they can be well informed. So again, I, I thought it was a very straightforward and productive meeting, where we, everybody knows where everybody stands and sits. And we continue a good working relationship with them and appreciate all the efforts that they put in.
Well, thank you for meeting with them. I think it's important that we, we made the time for them.
Yeah, I think they appreciated, you know, maintaining communication. There is a little bit of a disappointment, you know, obviously, if we end up going down the Andover path, but...
Well, it's something we have to certainly give some consideration to, because I, I am a strong believer that, you know, the Conquest Street opportunity to soar, I think, is a very short, could be a short-term opportunity, something we could do in the relatively near future. And if that goes away, if we end up going in a different direction, I think has to be considered in our financial equation.
Yeah, I think, like we did back several months ago, we should take, put all the facts on the table, the pros and the cons.
Well, thank you.
Make a decision for the time scale at which that, keep this thing going.
And Mr. O'Larry.
Just a couple of things. Update as far as the restroom concessions stand, the footings and foundations are in, and the change order for the brick overlay has been submitted to them. And now it's just wait for the construction of the, the unit, and anticipate, you know, the end of February or sooner, that being delivered. So things appear to be on track, so that's a good thing. As far as the negotiations with Comcast, we've been, Mr. Messier and myself, along with Ezdrob and Kerry Reddington, have been negotiating with the Comcast representative. It's been on a roller coaster ride over the last couple of weeks, but as of this morning, it appears to be, we're getting very, much closer, and we appreciate Comcast's efforts in trying to bring this thing to closure before the end of the year. So we should hopefully have more to report in the next week or so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Verizon has been contacted, and that's going to be scheduled for negotiations. Again, their contract expires six months after the Comcast one, and we've already started to set up appointments with them to, to meet.
So our next meeting is the eighteenth. Is there something we have to vote on by the end of the year?
Not necessar, well, if we're close to an agreement, they'll agree to an extension, and then, so it's not necessary.
Okay.
You know, but our goal is to have it by the end of the year. If not, there'll be a mutual agreement. Our town council and their council will, will draft up an agreement and just agree to an extension.
If you need us to have a quick meeting or...
I don't think it'll be necessary to have a special meeting for that.
Very good. Anything else?
Although it might be a special meeting to agree that we disagree, we have to go to an arbitrarist, but, but we're hoping that's not going to happen.
Let's hope not. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to just start off by welcoming Polte to the neighborhood. Polte Homes now officially our neighbor. So they're in the community now, so we welcome them to the community, and I'm sure we'll hear from them. One of the things I didn't really want to get hung up on while we had everyone here, I did send a request forward to, through Representative Jones and Senator Tarr, to see if the governor had any interest in us maybe having a formal with him. And I believe that at some point, we may be requested to be with him in his presence over this deal. As you said earlier in your comments, Mr. O'Larry, I think this was a template for the state to probably use as a success story in other areas. So when that time comes, if we hear something, the Michael, myself, will let everyone know. But I do believe that at some point, we're going to be requested to see him and celebrate this with them as well. Let's see. The only other thing I have left is I have put down a little challenge with the school committee that I wanted to share with you. Mel Webster is with them this evening, putting the same challenge with them. We'd like to have an ugly sweater, Christmas ugly sweater contest.
Oh, they'd definitely win.
And so, next meeting, the board's going to wear their ugliest Christmas sweater, and they're going to wear theirs, and they're going to let the community decide who had the ugliest sweater.
And we're talking about a Christmas sweater, right?
As long as it's ugly, Bob, you can wear it at the next meeting. That's what we're going to do. We're going to have a challenge. We have a little side bet, and I'm not going to get into that, because, you know, between Mr...
And it's only the sweater that's going to be...
Don't have to wear a tie next meeting. You have to wear an ugly sweater. I need you to wear pants. Yes. I want to make sure that's in the record.
And why, and why did you do this?
Why not? It's the spirit of the holidays. It's something different to challenge our school committee to have a little fun. In our December eighteenth meeting, I don't think we're going to have a tremendous amount on the agenda. It's our last meeting of the year. Hopefully, we won't have a lot, right?
Mostly licenses and reappearance, is what I expect.
Yeah, which we got a good chunk done this evening. So I'd like to take an opportunity to, you know, if you don't want to, you don't have to participate, but I threw the challenge out there. If you want to participate, it would be great.
I'm going to win.
I thought it'd be a little fun.
I think it's fun, but I just wonder what got you into it.
Well, you know, the school committee's always, you know, we're always challenging them, so we thought this would be a fun challenge. The next meeting, if we have the opportunity for the agenda, I would just like to try to maybe have a quick review of the entire year. So maybe between now and our next meeting, we can maybe put a couple of slides up, just to kind of review the calendar year and all the things that we've accomplished, because there's a lot happened this year. Put aside the Polte home, there's been a lot, and I think it's a great time of year, especially with the limited agenda items that we have for the next meeting. Just to quickly cap, quickly capture it and then talk about, we have a lot of budget stuff that's going to get going very quickly after the first of the year. Like to chat a little bit about that and really just wrap up the year. Thank everybody.
Just one more thing, Mr. Chairman, you know, as we say that we have kind of a limited agenda, I'd just like to acknowledge the amount of work that goes into the renewals, poor Jane over here.
I'll footstomp that.
You know, has to go through in order to chase down the renewals and the applications and the applicants, and she's doing yeoman's work, and we appreciate it and certainly acknowledge it.
You start the process in October, right?
October sixteenth.
October sixteen, oh.
And it won't finish until after the first of the year for those few holdovers that...
It doesn't go overlooked, Jane. You and Karen both, the work that I know you put in, mainly Jane, I know you spared this.
The days go by really fast.
Michael, have we scheduled the Saturday budget meeting yet?
I believe I have seen it on a schedule for the last Saturday of February.
Last Saturday of February, because I don't have it down, and I'd like to get that scheduled, although I don't make plans around it.
Looking at my calendar, the twenty-fourth, if I understand it correctly. So looking at my calendar, the 24th, if I understand it correctly. Saturday the 24th, if I, I'm correct.
Thank you.
I have one thing left that I just wanted to mention to the community. If you haven't participated, I had an opportunity to see the, the North Reading High School Masters doing the play right now. It just took place Friday and Saturday this past weekend, and they have two more shows this Friday and Saturday, 7:30 on Friday and 4:00 PM on Saturday, and I believe there are still tickets available, maybe not for Friday, but for Saturday, I believe there is some availability. I did have the opportunity to go, outstanding once again, and I really hope the community has, if you have the time to go, to go and see the play, the kids do an amazing job.
Go on Friday, we're looking forward to it.
Good. Yes, Mr. Gilberto?
Can you remind me, Mr. Chairman, one party that was not present today, if I didn't say it earlier for the announcement earlier, Polte Homes of New England, purely because of the scheduling matter and not being able to be here, they clearly are invested in the community and expressed a desire to attend at a future meeting to talk a little bit about the project, so I told them that we would work that out amongst you and I to have them on an agenda to talk about their project and what it may offer folks in the community.
Yeah, that would be great, because I've been asked, a lot of people have asked me about the details, I'm really not sure when they build schedule and when they plan to get going, but I, based on my discussions with, with them over the last few weeks, I know they, now it seems like they're ready to go pretty soon.
Yes.
But we don't have any detail that is...
They spent the money, they better get going.
We're hard sticking for them now. Okay, that's all I have, so I'll take, if anybody else has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.